All right, I am. I'm calling the Village of Cross Plains Board of Trustees meeting of October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three. The order, roll call, please.
Trustee Braden.
Here.
Trustee Brenner.
Here.
Trustee Borcard, here. Trustee Borclam.
Here.
Trustee Polakowski.
Here.
Trustee Kellier, here. President Lankoff.
Here. Please stand for a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the true republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we're at public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the village board at any issue. Please observe the time limit of three minutes. While the village board encourages input from residents, it may not discuss or act on any issue that is not duly noticed on the agenda. We have anybody that would like to speak?
If you have a registered, Lori Helen Brien.
Okay. Yeah, come right up to that mic if you don't mind. That way we can get it recorded.
Hi, my name is Lori Helen Brien, and I am speaking on behalf of the Norm Esser senior family to express our strong support for the proposal to name the newly renovated shelter at Bear Park in Cross Plains after our dad, Norm Esser senior. I hope you all had a chance to read the emails that were sent to the parking rep committee in support of this honor as well. Norm was a dedicated member of the community for many years and made significant contributions in a variety of ways. He worked for the Village of Cross Plains for approximately forty-six years and has also volunteered countless hours to support local organizations such as the Cross Plains Barrier Fire Department until he was about seventy years old, the American Legion, the Knights of Columbus, the Catholic Knights, and the World's Fair Committee, among others. As part of these organizations, he cleaned up trash along the highway, put out flags around the village, and assisted in planning and execution of the weekend-long Cross Plains World's Fair, including the fireworks that were enjoyed by all. Even after retiring from the fire department, he would return to help with their annual pancake breakfast fundraiser. The Village of Cross Plains was always very near and dear to Dad's heart. He took pride in knowing everything he did as both a village employee and a resident of the Cross Plains and how his acts impacted many people. Taking care of Bear Park was no exception. Making sure the grass was mowed, the diamonds were worked up and ready for ballgames, and the bathrooms are always in clean, looking condition were on the top of his list. I remember being in the hospital with Dad after he had a fairly significant heart procedure and him telling me that he needed his cellphone. I gave it to him so he could listen to voicemails and return some phone calls. As I was sitting visiting with him, his phone rang. It was the village crew members asking him where a specific water main shut-off was as they couldn't find it in the spot the map indicated it should be. My dad told them where the shut-off was and answered more questions from the village group about various things that were going on from his hospital bed. That's just one example of how dedicated he was to making sure the village was running smoothly. In addition to his professional and civic accomplishments, Norm was also a kind and caring person who was always willing to help others. He was a role model for our village residents and has inspired many people in our community with his positive attitude and commitments to making a difference. We believe that naming the newly renovated shelter after Norm would be a fitting way to honor his contribution to our community and to inspire future generations. It would also send a message that we value our residents and the hard work they put in to help the village live up to its motto, famous for friendliness. Dad was a very humble person, but we are sure he would be very honored to have the newly renovated shelter named after him. We urge you to support the proposal to name the newly renovated park shelter after our dad, Norm Esser. It's a well-deserved honor for a deserving member of our community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And with that being said, I looked at the agenda. It looks like you guys have a lot to discuss.
Is there anyone else?
That was the only one.
Okay. Is there anybody on the internet? All right, we will move to consent agenda. Upon request of any trustee, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration under general business. Is there anything that would? Any trustee you want to remove? All right.
I'm watching to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second? Discussion. I just have one question on the resolution for the budget amendment that had exhibit two. Is that? I couldn't find an exhibit one. Is there an exhibit one or is that? I just didn't know.
Labelled, but exhibit, I don't know why it's called exhibit two, but it's the.
Yeah.
Sprinting with all the.
Yeah, it's all the spreadsheet. I just, I just wanted to make sure that that was exhibit two and that, because in the past, people have questioned. Okay, all right.
Or I did not label it.
Do we need to do anything or is the discussion not record enough?
That's good enough for me. I, so it gets called back and someone says, well, that, there is no exhibit two. I see exhibit one, but that's, I just wanted to clarify that. That was the right thing. Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same? So moved. All right, we'll look to reports. I have nothing to report tonight. Village Vice President Judy?
Yes, I just want to congratulate Mike Jackson on seventeen years as of October thirtieth. And Scott Schmidt, he is two years in on October twelfth. And then also, I just, just take on that and we'll talk more about it with Norm Esther, but I will vouch that I was on World's Fair with Norm forever and me too. For a step. It is.
All right. Other trustees? All right, Cody?
We got some conceptual drawings for the pool. Hopefully in the next couple of months, we'll be presenting that to you. We're still doing some more work. Trying to, or looking at getting more feedback from the community. Also, a shout out to Dane Ziegler and Mike Axon. We received an email from a family from the Connaught that was here for a varsity cross-country meet and they were praising how awesome of a park it is, of a bear park. So, that might be appreciated. And that's all I got. All right.
Anybody else? All right, we'll go to village administrator.
I just have one quick update. As you may know, I've served for the last year as the representative on the Dane County Regional Housing Authority work group for the Village of Cross Plains. We've had monthly meetings for a year. I was just asked to serve on their executive committee as they go through the next year of implementation of some of those initiatives that were voted on over that timeframe. So I'll provide updates on that as new information is learned.
All right, thank you. Village department heads or other reports? Anybody want to speak? Okay. We'll go to general business. First one is discussion and possible action regarding naming of Norm Esser Park Shelter. Yeah, sure.
I would like to make the motion to name the shelter after Norm. After, as presented.
A second. I have a motion in a second under discussion. Anybody? I just have one. Did we want to put senior on that?
I would, I would assume.
Yeah. Okay, because this is just saying Norm Asser. I think we should probably.
Yeah, I, I would think we would want to do senior on there.
I think we can verify that.
And everybody is okay with that, then?
Yeah. Parks interact was unanimous with, with the.
The senior part, right? That's what I thought I heard.
Not with the senior part, but we're unanimous as far as naming it after him.
Yeah, yeah. My own, my only question is, do we put Norm Esser Senior Park Shelter versus Norm Esser Park Shelter?
I think that should be up to the family.
Okay.
I don't think we probably need to bury anything in motion here. I mean.
No.
Yeah, Mike, Mike's gonna work with them and, I mean, to get the sign and do.
I just want to make sure we do it right. I, I heard them say senior.
Right.
So that, I was. Mike, is there?
No, and that's fine. Yeah, and I'll work with them in regards to that if they want to fit like it would be, obviously, as the senior.
Right.
You can add that. I can ask them if they're like. That's just what they invited.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure we're, I don't want to get the sign up and then say that's not what we want and redo it. So, yes, Michael.
Do you know what they're gonna do? Are they thinking of putting a plaque on the, on the side of them?
Once we get a final plan, place it on the plaque. There may be some changes that you want to see about it.
Okay. Yeah, why don't we do that? Make sure we're all on the same.
Yep.
Playing field. All right. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same? All right, discussion and possible action regarding twenty-twenty-four general operating base budget and supplemental request. We remember last time we talked about them. But we couldn't vote because there wasn't an action on it. So I guess we'll go right through the letters again, and that way we can get confirmation. So we'll start with A. Ryan, you want to take the lead on that?
Sure. So the first, first supplemental was a request from the Gateway to the Driftless Organization. They were asking for fifteen hundred dollars to just offset some of their operating costs within the organization. The Gateway to the Driftless Organization is working on behalf of the municipalities here in Northwest Dane County, trying to establish more access to outdoor recreational opportunities and creation of the Black Earth Creek Trail, which is gonna hopefully connect to the new trail system that's coming across the Wisconsin River, connecting down to Mazo Maney.
All right. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve. Sorry. Approve the Gateway to the Driftless Organization. Request for the one thousand five hundred thousand.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second? I'll second. I have a motion and a second discussion. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same?
Aye.
All right. B, cybersecurity software upgrade. Throw that one to you, too.
Okay, so as we discussed last month, when I was doing a little review of our current cybersecurity software, I, it became aware to me that we should probably look into getting an upgraded cybersecurity package here in the village. So I did speak with our, our IT contractor. They gave me the best recommendation that they had for what would serve the purposes of the village and the new realm that we are in, in terms of global cybersecurity threats. So what you see on tonight's supplemental is just the base charge for what our IT budget normally would be with the inclusion of the additional funding, twenty-five hundred dollars annually for that new cybersecurity package.
All right, do I have a motion?
I motion to approve the cybersecurity software upgrade. I'll second.
All right, I have a motion in the second discussion. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same? The move. C. Your archive social, and I guess you went out and got some alternative for this being records of our social media.
Correct. So at the last meeting, just for a quick recap, I was asked to look into a few of alternative archiving software companies to see if they could provide the same service at a reduced rate for what we are getting for our increase from archive social. I included a few quotes from there. You will notice that there are some differential pricing based upon what they perceive the need might be. I was not able to verify whether or not we are legally required to copy all of our videos that we post online, or if we are just required to record the comments that are received on the website. Some of the software companies will do and monitor both as part of it, but if there is an off-charge, if we're gonna have archive social download all the videos that they've recorded and then can that information over to the new provider to upload. So there's, that would be why some of the charges are a little higher with at least one of the quotes that you see, but base pricing, you can see that there are some reductions. I can't guarantee that we won't be in the same spot in a year or two years where there might be market changes with those costs of the new providers and they subsequently raise their rates as well.
All right, we better do discussion first here. I'm not sure why we would need them to download our videos since we do it on the website.
Correct. That was.
Yeah, you only go back seven years, and I think you only have to hold them three years.
Okay.
So I, I, I'm not too worried about that since they're on the site. It's more about the emails and comments and, yeah, the website.
Yeah.
I, I think your only risk is minimal would be if a video got removed, right? Like Brian leaves, new village administrator comes in, doesn't know what they're doing, accidentally delete some. Well, what do you do to get it back if, like, you need that for the public record? But I think that's the minimal risk. That was the only thing I could think of when I was reading this.
So that would be, you're seeing that as the backup then, but don't we back? I thought we had this discussion that we do back up all our stuff every twenty-four hours or something like that?
We, we do. We have a backup a hard drive server backup in place, but we do keep the records of our own videos within the files from like tonight's videos. So there is and should be a record that we have access to either way. So my thought would be that probably be able to avoid that with a pretty high probability.
Yeah, I can't see where they would accidentally delete it both from YouTube and.
And the last.
Yeah.
Okay. And so what are your feelings? I mean, you've seen it and you've talked to these people. I, I mean, I, I'm just, just not.
I said through multiple demos, from what I can tell, they're all pretty much the same as far as the, the software provided that they let you access and you have access permissions to allow more than one staff member to be able to go in and access or download and archive if need be. If there was a threat received or something, Tony could have access permissions to get in. It wouldn't necessarily have to be me getting a record to him. He could have access to get it immediately, too. So that seemed pretty consistent across the board. It's just cost what you want. I think everyone else more or less offers the same features.
Is there a reason why Sharp is so much?
Well, that's what I'm.
Yeah. Honestly, I don't, I, I don't. The one thing with them, though, that I can say is that if there is a record exchange, like if we have archive social, download all of our information, we hand it over to them, and I think this is consistent with all the others as well, but there is gonna be an hourly charge for them to upload all that data into their server for retention purposes. So.
Do you have any idea how many hours that would be?
I, I don't, because I don't know how many records and everything we had. One of them, I think it was the second provider guesstimated about how many records, just with kind of like a back-looking approach to think we, I think they said they maybe had like two hundred ninety videos or something based on how many meetings we have a month and how many things we have on our YouTube page.
I know, but feed and everything, that's like each social media.
I think that is correct. Each individual account. Again, I'm not an expert on it, but that, that is my understanding. So, yes.
I like sending six bucks a month. That sounds a lot better.
I don't think, knock on wood, we've had to use that service two days, but I say that and that could be famous last words.
Yeah, that could happen, but I, I mean, again, not not really understanding all of this that well. I do, I agree. It's, it's, it's a lot cheaper. And you, sometimes you wonder why, you know, but again, it could be when they're trying to just build business. And then, like you say, they'll, I'll bet the next year and stuff like that. I mean, that's, that's, that's what the other company did on it with us, right?
It's still considerably less.
Yeah.
What we're being asked for continued services.
Correct. Cameron, you're a computer guy. What do you think?
What do you think? I mean, there wasn't a whole lot of information to go off of here for, for the different things. I mean, I think what I heard on the file server stuff, we probably don't need to back up video, just the comments, which would be substantially less data, which should be cheaper and faster to switch hands between providers. But I mean, I don't, I mean, those guys could, I mean, they could say it's gonna take a hundred hours and you know, not, you know. Nothing we can really do about that. I think that's probably something we have to pay no matter who we switch to if we switch. So I, I don't know. Maybe we just maybe approve this at the three thousand instead of forty-two hundred? And then
we won't do the gap, right?
And then Brian can, yeah. Brian can then look in to see if Sharp is gonna work and if it does, it comes in under budget and then we can.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So we will approve up to three thousand dollars to achieve this task?
Yeah. But we could.
Or a little bit of action on the budget. There's a budget and then just spend more. So I'm sure they have to.
Oh, I see. Yeah, that's a, that's a valid point, too.
So just leave it at three thousand and give Brian the power to figure it out with Sharp and he, he'll come back, obviously, if, you know, you know, it's gonna be way more and we can talk about that.
Oh, okay. All right. Did we already have a motion?
No.
Oh, I started with the discussion. Okay, very good. Okay, go ahead, Michael.
So like so it's archiving the feeds or the, or the streams. Do we know, do we allow comments on YouTube on the videos? Because I think you can turn that off. Or do we have to have that on?
I, I get it. I don't know if we are legally required to leave that on.
Absolutely not.
Yeah.
Because if we turn off the comments on all our YouTube channels, then there's nothing to archive there. Right? That's a good thought. Because if we have our own videos and we just upload them, we turn off the comments, there's nothing to archive on YouTube. So that saves whatever feed.
Okay.
Just a suggestion, just a good suggestion.
No, I, yeah, we should shut that. There's no reason to comment on.
It's just recording a meeting.
Right. So, and that's the record. Right. Yeah, yeah. No, I agree with you a hundred percent.
Um, yeah, that, just figured out, but if this Sharp thing can do what they say and it's just recording of those feeds, then that just seems like a good thing. It sounded like the smart one really wanted to, you know, download.
They were very thorough.
And like do everything and.
Correct.
But now we feel like we don't need to do that. No need to go. Pretty easy.
All right.
Okay, I'll look into it.
All right, thank you. All right, we're at D, Northwest Dane Senior Services.
I have a motion to, oh, oh, door.
I'll make a motion to approve the supplement.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and a second discussion. I think we've been all wearing shoes here at the last meeting.
All right, yeah, but, well, it still says TBD. Where is that?
Um, I don't know why we did it in the papers.
Yeah. Was, how much are we up for?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Oh, okay.
That's further.
Okay, maybe put that in the motion then or something.
So it's a change of four thousand.
One hundred forty-six thousand. Just under four thousand.
Just, yeah, because I'm trying to do the math.
The forty-five, forty-six is the population. It's close, though. That's the population of.
Okay.
It's, it's close to what the difference was.
Right. I was reading from there and.
Yeah. All right. Yeah, I guess we should amend the, uh, motion.
I'll amend the motion. To. Going to include the twenty-twenty-four budget asset, twenty-nine thousand zero twenty-two.
I'll second.
All right, so I have a motion in a second to amend. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so the original motion has been amended. Any other discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same? All right, creep monitoring. Do we need a review on that? Brian, you want, is there any updates to it since last month?
Um, yeah, so I did reach out to Carp C, Nick Bauer, to get an updated status. He doesn't have a full count yet. He did have the bulk of the main contributors from a financial standpoint listed on, on their chart. That would be the Dane County Land Water Resources, Carp C, USGS. And they had commitments from the Village of Black Earth. And it looks like Bequa and Trout Unlimited right now, as well as the Town of Cross Plains. So some of the smaller municipalities are still waiting to hear back on. That could just be a matter of when their board meetings are as well, but that was the update I had thus far.
All righty, we have a motion.
I motion to approve the project minutes for Black Earth Pre-Planning Services in the amount of eight thousand dollars. I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and a second discussion.
It's eight thousand, you're right.
Yeah. The five-year commitment.
Yep.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right. Assessment Services. Then we decide that. That's. I, I just, oh, I just want to make sure that unless there's something different.
Consent agenda, yeah.
It is on there, on the consent.
Right, we had talked last time about approving the. Proposal, and so then the contract isn't, this one consent agenda.
Yeah. I only left it in there just in the off chance someone had an issue with the contract stuff and wanted to pull it out and have this got there or whatnot. So, and amended, so we can go back and change something here.
Okay.
Yeah, that sounds good. Do we need to?
No, we don't need to do any shit, and it's, it's already been actioned on.
That comes in at less money.
No. No, it was more, wasn't it? If I remember, it was fifty-seven hundred or something?
It's more than what was last year, but less than if we stayed with it.
Correct. But yeah, I think it was like fifty-seven hundred added to the budget. Right?
Right. You, and that's, I guess, all last duty for that.
We already voted.
Well, yeah, it was on the consent agenda, but okay.
Yeah, no. Yeah, the only time, sure. I guess he left it on in case someone pulled it, right? At an automatic spot.
It's just this. So, okay, you have nothing. Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's all right. It's a little different. All right, Village Mowing Services. And this is the discussion between doing in-house or keeping a contract service. So let's have that discussion before we do a motion.
I'm going to play like minor stuff like that.
Yeah.
Say it again?
No, I'm just moving forward the screens here. Yeah.
Okay. People. What are we thinking?
I like the thought of doing it in-house. The fact that you can pay almost the same amount of money and have someone else available for following other things within the village or parks. I understand having another employee isn't always the easiest, but I feel like it best suits the village monetarily and staffing level-wise.
I have a. Go ahead.
I have a question concerning what was written in here about the March's proposal location document H and how that applies to whatever contract that was. What do we know about that or?
There is clear though. They used the right one.
They use the right one. So the bid is fine, then?
Yeah.
What, Rickman or whoever?
Yeah, Rickman, yeah. It is fine.
Oh, okay.
Anybody else?
Um, we've had success with twenty years of contracting. I know that this year the cost went up quite a bit and vendor wants to use July, goes to past vendor. Based on feedback and presentation at the last meeting, I think it would be wise to give a little bit of chance and see how that works. And I think it's good and really good that staff has the numbers and the plan together. If that doesn't work out, I think it's less risky just to try to contract.
I think it's less risky just to try to contract for one more time, but not your individual. Cause we had a great relationship with the previous driver. Do you, do you have any help?
Relating towards, I'm kind of re-old again, more time for one thing, it's hard to find employees sometimes. Um, and we do have to stay, you know, defining employees and we're all talking about salaries right now and I'm worried that if we do hire. Will we have to keep raising wages anyways, so I would like to see one more a year with a little bit. And then come back and see for that one.
All right, Cameron, Michelle.
If you're, well, if, just to pick on that a little bit, if that's your concern, then wages are gonna go up for, I mean, wages are gonna go up for a contractor at the same time, right, it's not like. You know, you know, like, I mean, that, the likelihood that you're gonna have someone at a much lower contract price than like, you know, the in-house price is unlikely, they're gonna go up together if they're going up. Um, I don't, I'm, I, I think we should hire in-house, it just, it seems to make a whole lot of sense given a year's worth of. Value uh, for the same prices a summer, right?
But um, I'm kinda with the group to contract on and uh, one, I think, uh, again, I wanted to make sure everybody knows the Rickman uh. Bid had sales tax included at a hundred and sixty to a hundred and eighty uh, per week, which we will not be paying, so. That should be subtracted from that, on Mike's uh, um. Projection and stuff, the, the one thing that's missing is on the purchase of the mower. Um, he has the two hundred and twenty nine dollars a month, the thing is, that mower will not last. The length of the loan, the ten years, we'll, uh, if you remember, they're usually replaced after two or three years, the warranty is for two years. You're looking at actually during that ten year period that we're using as a comparison, we'll probably end up buying three or four mowers. Um, so there's a little bit of added uh, cost on that, and I think there's also a cost. For the hiring process, uh, advertising, time spent in interviewing, uh, that kind of stuff, so. I think because um, of where we're at with, and we'll find out later tonight how close we are to. Um, the levy limit potentially, I think contracting services is the safe way just from that aspect of it. And then the other key for me is, I believe there is a real option out there to reduce the cost of mowing. I honestly believe that we can reduce how many acres instead of fifty two, I think we can get that down. And if you hire in-house, you're not gonna have the savings, because we're paying the salary no matter how much they mow. While with a contract service, it will reduce how much is being mowed, that should bring the cost down, so I think there's the chance. Of reducing costs with a contract uh, service versus in-house, Cameron?
I think you're right, there's a chance you reduce cost for the summer mowing, if you look at it just in that black and white world. And, I mean, it, it just, it just doesn't seem as black and white, cause we're talking about an employee who's gonna do other things. For a year, and even if you have another dry summer like we had this summer, it's not like. That employee now sits around and twiddles their thumbs for the summer, right, and like, you know, we're, we're losing money there, right, there's, there's, there's plenty of work to do. I'm between, between the parks and um, um, facilities team, as, as um, both Jerry and Mike have spoken about. I don't know, and just your point on like, yeah, there's costs to hiring people, but I mean, if you get a good employee for, I mean, even five years, I mean. The time that you've spent to hire them is paid for ten times over, you know, in terms of the value they provided the village and the stuff they did.
But I keep looking at that list over there that staff and us produced on. What staff members we should be hiring and I see public facility down as number five.
This would be a perks position.
Yes, so.
Okay, so then that would be number two then?
So, apart, I mean, police office, I think we would all agree would be ideal, but then, I mean, you have to pay the minimum operating costs of the budget no matter how you skin this, right? I mean, you gotta pay for someone to mow, or we decide we're not gonna mow.
Oh, no, no, you gotta pay the, oh, there's no doubt about that. All right, Mike, and then Bobby.
Two things within that, uh, so that there is for moving forward with new budget numbers, you're actually taking operating money that's currently in the budget. And will pay for the position, so that's not done with that lineup that you have there. The other thing is, you talked about, uh, we can buy three or four more within that time, you're probably not wrong, but what you are wrong about is the fact that. Those mowers have life, they have value, so when you trade those in, you get money back, right?
Well, you get a, a, you get a cheaper less, you don't get money back, but you get less. The mower sixteen thousand, when you sell it after three years, you might get six thousand, you're still paying ten thousand for a new mower, so you still are paying.
Correct, but what happened there is a full amount of that mold, so you're technically getting some of that money.
I understand, I just didn't spend the time to try to calculate.
Because it's, it's necessary.
Well, I'm just pointing out, oh, the cost. All right. Other just go, oh, Bobby.
I just wanna remind everyone before we vote on this, um, with two hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars maximum we can spend. If we approve to pay a private contractor, then his money we are taking away from our current employee's wage. So you are choosing a private company for all these people back.
No, you're wrong, Mike just made it very clear that we're hiring another employee, so that I, I would make the same argument, we're hiring a new employee and still giving it to these employees.
Employees, and hey, everybody, if you go with the contractor, it's what, thirty thousand more dollars, so how do you can afford?
It's the other way around, it's more for in-house.
It is significantly cheaper.
I.
Plus twenty extra weeks of employment where it can help.
Where, where are you, tell, show me the numbers there.
Is it your land page mic or?
Seventy seven, yeah, the, the total operating budget for twenty twenty four is seventy seven thousand two ninety. The total cost of the mow, and that's if you put everything in there, that's my memo, I said it D.
Whoa, 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 but you got the employees for fifty two off, for fifty two weeks.
Put on doing apples to apples, if you're con, if you're comparing mowing, Jay, just mowing.
I am.
The village can mow in-house for seventy seven thousand two hundred and ninety dollars.
Okay.
Okay, and that is the ma, in my, I mean, that's probably the maximum amount, because the one thing that you're also not counting on is, we don't know if this employee takes. Healthcare, they single plan, or they, they take family, that's, that's nineteen thousand dollars.
Yeah.
They don't take family or don't take anything like the last employee, that's zero.
Okay, I, I'm gonna go with, so, so seventy seven thousand, the, the low contract said eighty three thousand three hundred.
No, it's ninety two thousand.
No, you gotta take out the sales tax.
Ninety two thousand.
I can get eighty seven, what's your number?
I, I had eighty three thousand three hundred, you subtract out the one sixty, one eighty per week. Twenty eight times the number.
You, so you're changing someone's proposal.
I'm not changing anybody's proposal, I'm just saying, I know we don't pay sales tax. Right, so we're not gonna.
Changing their number, they didn't tell you to change three thousand?
No, they, they have a bid for what it is to mow each time.
Their bid came out to ninety six thousand, seven forty three, sixty four, if there's a number change to their budget. They can submit that change, but they can't, they can't come in last.
No, you have to go to their bid, go to their bid, I don't know who did this.
Their bid tab.
Their bid tab shows how much they are charging per week for mowing. Then underneath that, they had how much for sales tax.
But you can't take that out from.
Well, of course I can take it out, we're not gonna, we're not gonna pay sales tax, right?
You're not going to pay sales tax, but.
Okay, so they're not gonna charge us that, right?
Proposal for the village, they didn't change that for wholesale.
Uh, if they had included that in the lump sum that they did, they had it as a separate line item, sales tax.
They have a total number on the bottom that it's going to cost thirty or whatever, that I don't know exactly what the numbers, that's what the number said at the bottom of there, she, you can look at there.
All right, but anyways, let's just, I'll even go, so seventy seven thousand compared to, let's say you're ninety two thousand, right? So that's twenty eight weeks, so that means there's twenty four weeks we're gonna pay that employee, right? So how much is that for the twenty four weeks? Cause that's money that we don't have for increasing our current salaries, right? Cause we're paying another employee, we gotta pay him for a whole year, we're not paying him for just the summer, we're paying him the whole year, so now you still gotta take in the twenty four weeks. And you're right, he's gonna be doing something else, granted, but don't tell me it's cheaper to hire someone for fifty two weeks. Than it is to contract service for twenty eight weeks, that's just not true. It's just not true.
Total cost of operating budget for twenty twenty four, but next year is seventy seven thousand two ninety. In twenty twenty five, it, it's higher, I'm not saying it's not, it's high, it's gonna be higher than that, because we're gonna pay them for January through May.
So the proposal was not to hire them.
We were hired in May, in May of twenty twenty four.
Okay, we're still paying, you, you, you're ma, you and Bobby are telling me. That by contracting service, we're taking away raises for our current employee.
I didn't say that.
But yet, when we hire somebody, then we have all this extra money to give. Raise it, that is a false.
I didn't say that.
Okay, I'm just saying, that is a false statement, and I'm still looking at this. And you guys gotta help me here, I'm reading what it's saying, it's saying seventy eight thousand plus a part timer is another six thousand, that's eighty four thousand plus. That's what, the eleven thousand was fifteen hundred.
Can you go to the document on the board that you're talking about? Please, so I can relate to your numbers here.
What page is it?
Well, there's the one I'm talking about, right there.
This is it, okay.
That shows right there, they split it out, the cost to us is the thirty two seventy five, not the one eighty. Yes, he concluded sales tax and he still was the lowest bid, but that doesn't mean we're gonna pay it, and I'm certainly not gonna budget for sales tax at a hundred and eighty bucks for twenty eight weeks. That doesn't make any sense, that's really stealing money that could be given to employees. Right?
Can you go to the exhibit?
Right, yeah.
Did you read exhibit D?
I'm going off of what you did handed out the last time, where you broke it all out. I didn't think I had to reread it again.
There's a new memo, I mean, it's all about in regards to the operation, how would, how we would do this for twenty twenty four.
Okay.
In the previous discussion, it was that we were hiring someone right away, going that route, now it's like, wait, we could save the village money, okay.
You, you're saving us short term money, right, by hiring in May, but next year we're gonna have in January through.
And I have that in the memo.
Yeah.
I have that all in the memo.
So it's a hundred and two thousand, is that what you're saying?
For twenty twenty five.
Yeah.
Correct.
All right, so that to me is the true cost then.
Okay. So, a hundred and two.
Cause we're not gonna fire somebody, we're not gonna hire him for twenty twenty four and then it goes up to a hundred and two and we say, sorry, that's too much, we're gonna. Release you. No. Uh, yeah, so, so the, what we're going on is a hundred and two thousand, and that to me is. Twenty thousand higher, even with your numbers, it's fifteen thousand, and that's significant, that's one percent of our base budget.
Uh, at this, do we need to get a new proposal from Rickman, also we have. I mean.
Mike, so in, one of the things that you brought up was uh, planting fescue to cut down on acreage. We had a gentleman coming to our parts and direct meeting last month or last week, uh, name is Bruce Schweizer, lives on King Arthur Court. He heard about this and he was like, hey, it's a fantastic idea, but. It actually will cost you more in the first three to five years of trying to establish that type of grass. Then we'll just run over current existing grass with a mower. He thinks it was a great idea in theory, but in actual execution, it's gonna take more manpower to establish that type of no mow fescue.
Well.
Just so you're aware, I can get his contact.
No, no, I, I, I had his information and we've also been contacted by someone from Olson Tune and the Bruce Company that does it. So we are going to have them come to the committees to look at this, but I just want you to remember, if you go down to just Scenic Valley. If we cut scenic valleys mowing in half, that's fourteen thousand dollars. We could go to build that, and then you could go to the next place.
That's fourteen thousand dollars initially, like, just in the mowing cost?
No, the fourteen thousand would be the savings per year for mowing. If we would cut that out, cause if you look at the bids, they were nine forty to a thousand dollars a week to mow down there at Scenic Valley. So if you would, to me, you take half of that all around the, the retention pond, turn that into. This equal lawn that only has to be mowed once a year, even if it runs me fourteen thousand dollars. Each year to get it established, it's a break even, and I have a hard time believing it's gonna cost me fourteen thousand, I'd like to ask you, cause when you say expensive, I'm not.
Hand weeding, you're like, when that's being the way I remember him saying, um, cause you have to go in and hand weeded, you need a special mower to mow it. You can't just run it over, it lays over and dies.
That I, that I, a, all I can say, you know, and I'm not an expert in this, all I know is golf courses use it all over the United States. I used it at Midtown, we've never mowed, we've never mowed it, and we've never pulled weeds from it, it. But like I say, we'll bring all the experts in and have a good discussion on it, but I, I'm, when someone says it's expensive compared to what?
Talking about to, like, to establish it, you gotta take four, three or four inches of top swivel off to get rid of all the weeds, you can't just rotate it.
Uh, like I say, I have, I sent you a link, yeah.
Cause I looked, I looked into it after he, his meeting, and as much as it will save you fourteen thousand dollars a year mowing. You're gonna invest more time back there into that type of.
Well, that's one thing we'll just have to explore, but even if there's another option out there, my point was. If there's ability to reduce the amount that is mowed. We can get savings if we use contract service, if we do in-house, we don't have that.
In-house mowing, instead of mowing that every week, Mike can drive by and say, hey, we don't need to mow this week, we're good. We just saved a cut there, so if we can eliminate that in half, by going in-house, they don't.
Well, we do that with contractor, this year they did that.
And it worked well?
I don't know if it worked, I guess we'll have to look at the bills, you know, and one time they were mowing once every three weeks, I don't know, my guess is they didn't bill us the other two weeks.
I did see a boy in village hall a couple of weeks ago and I did not need it.
Do I do a roll call vote on this?
Well, let's wait, yeah, I'll call that, that's, that's, that's mine, we're, we're still in discussion.
There's no motion.
No. All right.
Uh, I'm going to, we're all looking at both things and I, I said it a month ago too, we had very good partnership with the previous subcontractor. Uh, I'd probably say that was decent online, uh, I was a local person. Um, the person who has the little bit that we're thinking about going is also a local person. Um, I would like to see them have an opportunity, I think it's less risk. To do one more year and see how it feels, I think the information that's been gathered, hope someone's made a good decision, but overhead is always an M B A, any business, right? So we're adding lawn mowing, we're adding storage, we're adding equipment, so that's why I think it's safer and less risky just to try the contract one more year. And then we have this great information, we've mowed at Williams, went in house. Otherwise, maybe it works as a great new partnership, where a lot of them have been there for twenty plus years and they get themselves that. So that's my reasoning, for certain.
I, I appreciate that reason a hundred percent, however, I see twenty plus hours worth of work that would help our. Village as a whole, right, your person rep director might not have to be in a plot if you have another person here to work. You wouldn't have to spread so thin, I see Dana at the parks all the time, working his tail off, could you use some help, Dave? Bobby, please.
All right, any other discussion? All right, can I have a motion in the positive on either way?
I make a motion that the village subcontract out with Rickman Lawn Care for our village mowing service.
I'm sorry, no motion.
Uh, can you repeat that, I, I guess. Uh, can you repeat that? I I guess I was a little confused, you went with Richmond, but then I thought you said it's village, oh, the village mowing, okay, gotcha. Alright, now I understand. Alright, any other discussion on this? Roll call, oh, sorry, go ahead, Michael.
Sorry, I'm kind of a little uh, on the fence about this, I understand how another staff member could be useful for staff, but I do believe in the reduction of overhead and not pointing someone for the subsequent twenty to twenty. Know they'll be able to do work, but I think this right now is a better plan to let Steve Howard who was with us sometime.
Cameron?
Just wanna point out the savings of an employee, I mean, we can't measure them in like, if we were to go with another employee. I mean, like, it's really easy looking at numbers, black and white, you know, oh my gosh, this thing is greater than that, but like, I mean, this other employee might free up Mike some time and maybe he finds an extra grant. Right? You know, there there's a whole slew of things that would come, you know, could come downstream. You know, e- even just, you know, our staff is spread thin, if one of them decides to leave, replacing them is expensive, right? And then that person and the next person maybe doesn't stick around a whole year, you know, like that, I just, I I see more risk in thinly spread staff than than a contracted mowing service.
See, I'm the, I think it's the opposite, we take on mowing and that person's sick or quits, now we're pulling another employee to do the mowing from doing what they regularly do, because we don't have to worry about it if it's contracted out.
Sure.
It's their job to find someone to promote, so I can, I can play that the other way too.
Well, yeah, okay, someone's sick temporarily for mowing itself.
We hire them and they quit and you.
Sure, I mean, you run that risk too, but um, I mean, I don't know, I would, I would much rather have, you know, a a long-term employee, uh, you know, cause you know, you run the risk of getting a nice happy employee who does a lot of good work here and stays a long time, that is gonna produce substantial value, immeasurable, something that we can't just look at, you know, dollars and donuts and and costs, and um, I just want that to be noted.
Alright. Alright, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Kristi Bonkowski.
Yes.
Kristy Borcar, no, Kristy Borclan.
No.
Kristy Brunner.
Yes.
Kristy Braden.
No.
Kristy Kellman.
Yeah.
Yes. Alright. Discussion and possible action regarding the twenty twenty-four draft budget and village staff supplement request. Bobby, is there a way you wanted to proceed with this?
If you could do this like some, like an overview. I I spent so much time this weekend trying to reconcile some of the numbers you had in emails, and and they sent out a a little kind of memo thing where you, you know, he compiled some stuff, and like, I just could not get anything to land straight. So like, I guess what I'm looking for is, I think you had noted in one email that if we approved all of these staff supplemental requests, it would add with like
Forty-eight thousand.
Forty-eight, so like, I have a couple of spreadsheets here, and I was like punching in the numbers and running, I could not get forty-eight to come out, so I'm just trying to figure out that.
So several of our staff members are not one hundred percent on the levy. So the forty-eight thousand is public will be added to the levy, not the total increase.
Wow.
The total increase.
Yeah.
The total increase is a lot. You you had a total increase, I was trying to.
Uh.
Eighty-eight thousand, he he total increase including the three percent. Instead, uh, he, uh, Cameron actually did it, I just copied data from what was given to us from my spreadsheet, and I had a hundred and one, two thirty-one, he came up with eighty-eight thousand two or six.
That was just for the contract.
Right, 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 then you take the contract, that's another nine thousand. So you're talking about ninety-seven thousand total.
Yes, I got a total of ninety-seven, six, nine, three.
Yeah.
That sounds roughly, yeah.
Okay, and then I was just could not square how that ended up at forty-five, figuring whatever that number was, okay, I gave it.
So the accounts listed in the packet are the levy amounts.
I don't know, what is it, my mental?
No, in the, or which packet?
Yeah, what packet?
So all.
The type like.
Stuff a little.
Yeah, all the supplemental.
Buy the supplemental for a public works individual that just looked at the levy or nothing.
That is their whole salary.
So some of them need smart.
Yep.
She listed out at the bottom, general fund, seventy percent water utilities, sewer utility by percentages.
Oh, yeah.
And so that's.
Yeah, right.
And all to the water, um, with water treatment plant operators is heavily on the sewer, you know, it's very little that goes on.
Got it, okay.
Brian and my son over mowed fifty percent on a levy twenty-five. Renee's partly on water sewer, but he's probably on water sewer.
So does this have any impact on sewage costs and stuff as well, then?
I mean, the sewer rates won't go up, it's just how much more or less cash, I have a feeling. So yes, it would affect their expenses, but the rates are geared up supportive.
Right, that that's good, thank you.
So do you wanna walk through it all, or are we just taking questions?
I think questions and comments, um, I I don't know that's a good idea that we individually vote on employees, like.
No, I I I I would agree, I I I certainly agree with 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 you on that, I think when we decide something, it should be a a broad base, or at least broken into groups, I would agree with that. Um, he- here's some things that I think are important. Um, one, the levy limit for us uh in twenty twenty-four is three million five, what?
Yeah, three and a half.
Oh, okay, I was gonna be exact, but that's alright, um. For it, so the number on this, I think is somewhat deceiving. Um, it looks here, when you look at this, it has the three million two seventy-five, and it looks like we're lowering taxes by the two point one four percent, but in reality, and 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 it was stated in the memo, and I'm not sure why it wasn't included in it, but we have the mowing that we knew we were gonna have, right? So that's eighty some thousand, so that puts us up to into a slight increase in taxes. I can tell you right now, and it's uh, very clear, I think I put it in there, EMS is going up huge amount. Eighty-six thousand, um, and it could go even higher, there's a greater chance that that number's gonna go up than go down. Uh, and the reason I say that is, the only reason it didn't get voted on at the last month is because I challenged the number and I challenged how they were bringing revenue, they were saying you're gonna bring in an extra forty thousand dollars in revenue, but yet the revenue for twenty twenty-three didn't match that. We have a meeting on November second, so we'll be able to have ten months worth of of data on revenue side of it, and that will pretty much determine what the revenue will be using for twenty twenty-four, that's kinda how we have done it in the past. Um, so if the revenue goes down, they they put in the budget an increase of forty thousand in the revenue, if the revenue doesn't go up forty thousand, that eighty-six will be going up higher. Uh, I don't think I'm gonna have much luck in lowering that number, I'm certainly going to try very, very hard to do that. Um, it's just that I'm pretty much up against a wall when it comes to to that, um. So you add that to it, now we've added, just in those two items, a hundred and sixty-six thousand bucks. We're already getting close to basically, uh, I would say close to a three percent tax increase in that.
Are you even looking at that sheet?
Well, tell me, okay.
Another two hundred and eight thousand dollars to break even on the tax rate.
Well, okay, then I'm not changing, I don't, I'm I'm trying to follow this chart of yours, so you had zero, we're at minus point two one four, you go up to a hundred and fifty thousand if we add.
You're looking at levy.
Yeah.
Next rate.
Well, no, I I did I say levy? I think I was.
You said you were gonna raise.
I was holding this, so, so wasn't it?
You said raise taxes by three percent.
Okay.
I'm just saying that's a lie.
Okay, alright, good enough, I I'll take that, alright. So then if we go up to the levy limit, which if you add the extra forty, if we can come to the forty-eight thousand, now we're up to two hundred and some hundred thousand different of it, and that is not even taken into consideration. Well, that that's pretty much the solid on on stuff that's easy to actually prove, I guess. Alright. So tell me, Bobby, with us going up to two hundred, let's say the two hundred and twenty-five thousand, what is the percent increase in the taxes?
One half of a percent.
One half?
Fifteen dollars and fifty-two cents on pretty much every thousand.
Okay.
I'm sorry, say that number again.
Fifteen dollars and fifty-two cents.
Right, so that, so I'm just, so I'm now on the chart that Jay was on, so going up to two hundred, this is just so I can understand.
Yeah.
A rate of eight sixty-five.
And that's based on three hundred thousand, yeah, right.
Which is, which is to be, is still less than
Last year.
Last year's taxes.
Yep.
If you look at the far right column on that.
Yeah, yeah, I I I, yeah, I I'm, I'm following, I'm following. But it puts us up to the levy limit.
Near the levy limit, correct, yeah.
Which is gonna happen this year, not here.
Yeah.
Well, well, this is, here's the thing where I I I'm gonna just disagree a little bit here. So we ended up getting an extra ninety-nine thousand from increased in shared revenue. Our growth value went up three point eight seven, that's another two hundred thousand. Our investments went up a hundred thousand. Dane County gave us an extra thirty-four thousand to the library. So to help our budget, that's three hundred and twenty-four thousand. And we still are looking to increase another two hundred thousand. So we're looking to uh go up almost six hundred thousand. Cameron?
It's overdue. I mean, that's why, it's it's over, we've never had the opportunity, because we haven't had the the change in, you know, the change in, um, you know, the the state, particularly the money from the state. Um, but I mean, like, I mean, we've been, I've been, this is, I'm almost through my second year, but I mean, even before that, I've been listening to how, you know, from staff, how we're, I mean, not paying competitive wages, and I mean, like, it's it, this is way overdue, which is why, I mean, at some point, you gotta pay the pipe. Or or lose all your staff, and you know what's really, really expensive? High staff turnover, we are lucky, it hasn't happened, we're lucky. And and we wanna keep kicking that can down the road, increasing the risk that all of our valuable staff here that have, you know, learned the ropes and spent a lot of time and have that experience are gonna leave. Then we gotta hire brand-new faces who's gotta learn it all, that's all really, really expensive. Okay, and at some point, we gotta pay it, I mean, we gotta either pay competitive wages, or, I mean, that that day is coming, and we're gonna, we're gonna suffer in in terms of the villages, we're gonna get the stuff that needs to get done, people are gonna be unhappy, I mean, I mean, that's, 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 that's how that plays out.
Okay, and and that's, that is a great connection, because that has been the goal for the last two years, right? We, as a board, allow department heads to get together and come up with a wage proposal, right? That is probably, I would guess, there's not too many boards that have empowered their staff to do that, right? Whatever, right?
Sure.
And they came out and we approved that, right? And the premise was exactly what you said, we need to be competitive. We need to retain our employees, right? They came up with four communities, right, to achieve that, Mount Hore, Verona, Wanakee, Middleton. Now, when you look at Cross Plains, we are very small compared to those. But if we were comparing job for job, I would say those are bad comparison, but the argument they made are, these are the villages and municipalities that we are competing against and losing people to, right? That's right in that report. That's, and I wanna, I I certainly went along with that, that made sense to me, right? They said also in that report, if we can get seventy to eighty percent of starting wages, that should be enough to retain and keep our employees and be competitive and hire. Right? So those, to me, were the parameters that we were looking at. Right? So and that's when we, when I look at this, and I was for that, and I'm still for it. But then what bothers me a little bit, after all that went through and we approved it, there were changes made. Changes in it. One of the big ones that I saw that I'm I'm having a hard time with is they ended up changing the grade and they eliminated the administrator from the grade system. So people could get moved up to the highest grade, which automatically does pay, I think that's wrong. I think it leaves him, our administrator, without a grade. Now, the reason, cause I did check in, I asked why, and it was because he's under contract. So they don't think contract people, and to me, the grading system was based on your responsibility, your supervision, and your authority, which has nothing to do, because everybody, as far as I'm concerned, come to the board here to negotiate salaries. Alright, so they changed that, so I look, noticed that upper management got bumped up while some of the line workers got bumped down. Alright. My whole thing, I'm thinking, no, it should be the opposite, we need to bring up our line workers. Right? And I'm not gonna question on the others, so then the other one was, let's look at these four municipalities. They did average salaries of the positions, and then that's what we did, and you look on that chart, I went through, and besides a library staff, the lowest one is our administrator when it comes to percentage, they're at seventy-six percent. There's some that are over a hundred, hundred and eight, hundred and seven, eighty-nine, ninety-three. So then I looked, okay, let's take a look at percentages of their increase in salary. And it goes again from three percent all the way up to sixteen point six percent. And I guess, you know, I thought we were trying to be within that eighty percent, right? And I don't mind if we're a little higher and stuff, but I I just don't, I I guess what I felt was what they were proposing was one thing that I could go with, but then at the end there, things get changed. And I'm, I'm not against some of these people getting higher ones, I don't understand why some are only getting the three percent. You know, um, when they're kinda lower, but so that's kinda where where I'm coming from, and I agree that we need to raise salaries, but I I I'm not sure when we get into double digits all in one year, if that is the correct way to go. And I'm really um, not happy that we lowered somebody and they're one of the lower increases. You know, that's, I I I'm not sure this is fair. That's, I guess what I'm saying, and I don't, I guess I'm trying to figure out I can read, they should be here, they should be there, and I'm thinking, whoa, I'm not seeing that, and I'm not understanding that. So I got one other question, and I'll let staff respond, so that's my whole thing with this. And then there was the step raises, if you remember, they talked about in the report. And what they did after we approved it is they put it into three groups. Right? So you have group one, group two, one group starts at step one, another group starts at step two, another one starts at step three. Another one starts at step three, what I don't understand is how those steps were going forward. So if I'm in step three this year, and those cover eighteen years, eighteen percent. So what is my expectation if I'm in group? Step three, and I have fifteen years on, am I getting bumped up to step? Seven or eight next year? Or am I stuck in step three and we're all kind of starting step, because. To me, it should be longevity, it shouldn't be tied to it, because, and this is the question I'm also needing. I can't tell if the steps are tied to the grade. Or they're separate, so if I'm in step, if I'm in grade five, step five. And they move me up to grade six, do I start at step one? Or do I start at step five, so even though you're getting a new position, you're maintaining the level of step. So if, when you move up, you could be, okay, almost double, you could double your. Right, because this, you're moving up to a grade, most people, when you move up the grade, you start at the bottom and work up, right? That's kind of, or they guarantee, when you get up to this grade, you at least get a ten to ten grade, whatever. So I, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm interested in hearing the response.
There's a lot of stuff, maybe you wanna ask, like, one, like. Question one, question two, question.
Okay, well.
Not to me, to staff.
Yeah, I thank you, so let's, let's, let's just, I, I guess the big one to me again, and, and. I, I'm not gonna let Brian uh jump on his sword here, help me understand why you eliminated the administrator from. The grade system.
Okay, I can take that, um, so basically, the communities that we reached out to. Um, one of the communities that kind of served as the, the vision behind our own compensation strategy. In my communications with their administrator, that was kind of the feedback that he gave me as far as how he has. Redone theirs, um, just kind of said, this is kind of the new way that communities are going this direction. Um, I think if we were going to be targeting. Increases for all of our department heads, which was kind of the, the um consensus agreement. For where we were trying to take this strategy was to move everybody up, but also fairly compensate and acknowledge that our department heads are all of the same value. Um, we wanna try to achieve an end goal where we can get everybody as close to possible, um, as far as comparable salaries. Um, within the department head ranks, um, then that would require the administrator to be moved up. And the other corresponding positions to be moved up as well. Um, I think overall, again, the, the challenge with this proposal. Um, was, again, we were trying to be good stewards of the village's money, we're not trying to. Um, increase costs, we were under the impression that there would be some shared revenue increases this year, we weren't quite aware of how much there would be. Um, we always tried to operate within the parameters of what we found out, we might be able to receive as a village, so. Getting back to how we came up with these different levels of increases, three percents versus. A monetary amount versus where people are placing grade, all of it came back to, at the end of the day, trying to stay within. The range of acceptable shared revenue, increased money within the village, not compromising the village in terms of. Excessive tax increases, um, but simultaneously addressing some longstanding issues that needed to be. Um, fully addressed and reviewed here. Um, and kind of bringing it all together at one time, I know ideally, we would probably have liked to piecemeal this out, but. This was the hand that we were dealt, we worked on this for over ten months, um, and uh. You know, I think we've done a pretty damn good job of making sure we addressed everybody, I wish there was more to go around, but we were, I think. Fair in what we did and, and tried to address everybody and take every department head's feedback to heart.
So, so. Were you in the raise on this question, or you were not?
Um, no, I'm not included in this at this time.
He gets three percent.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, no, not, not as part of the supplementals, yeah.
No.
And was the chief?
He's on there for three percent. Correct, ideally, we would love to see something down the road addressing that, but at this time, we tried to focus on making sure everybody else was the focal point.
Alright, anybody got questions on just the grading then? Cause I will keep going on.
I wanna just ask, what community were you talking to?
Wanakee.
Okay, cause this, I went through some of the stuff that was out there, it looks a lot like what Wanakee did with the grading.
Okay, any other questions on the grading?
And again, the, just to, for, for reference, I know we, we, there was a lot of information that was thrown out there. The eighty percent figure was what we were trying to achieve for the, uh, for the comparable. For the step one grade that we were trying to, uh, to achieve for a hiring point, so.
Well, it's not one, it's just step one.
Yeah, step, no, 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 yeah, correct, step one. Um, but again, so when, when compared to all of our employees, we're gonna have some employees that are gonna be shown as much higher than that eighty percent. Because they have been here fifteen, twenty, thirty plus years, so of course, they will always look like they're. Over the eighty percent figure, but that is really the hiring rate that we were trying to achieve some comparables with.
The ones that we did pick, though, the Middleton, Verona, Wanakee, I just feel like they're not us, I just feel like there's so much bigger and it's not what we are. Mount Hore was one, I feel like it's the most comparable.
Yeah, there wasn't a lot of, I, I mean, even within Dane County, there aren't a lot of good comparables that I could say with a straight face. It's a high probability one of our employees would leave for this like-sized population community. For a similar pay, that there weren't many within that range, so. I would say that somebody who possessed the experience here, within any of our departments, with the many hats we ask our people to wear here. Would stand a pretty good chance of being able to move up the ladder at one of these corresponding communities as a next stop.
Cameron?
I thought about this too, and I, I guess I kind of came to a similar conclusion that Brian just said about the different sized communities, and also just, I mean, something that. Jerry said in one of the meetings way back when, that kind of especially, I mean, yes, these communities are bigger, yes, they have bigger tax bases. And yes, they have more people then, right, so they need more people to bother us, more, so it's, it's not, it, it's, you can't look at like, I mean. You can't look exactly and say, like, look, their tax base is so much bigger, therefore, they can just like afford to pay their staff a lot more because they also need more staff. So if we wanna keep our staff, like, I'm not, I'm, you know, I'm not saying we need to, you know, should be paying way over all of those communities or anything, but I'm saying, you know. We can't advertise ourselves if we want good staff here as, well, you're gonna get eighty percent of what you couldn't want to key, come to Cross Plains for eighty percent of want to key, I mean, that's. That's not, you, you gotta position to position, right?
And, and that's why I went along with it, I agree with that a hundred, but I'm gonna disagree, if you look at, and that's why I put the percentages in here. So let's take uh Middleton, their population is five hundred and thirty two percent bigger, right? So for it to be equal to us, then their equalized value should be five hundred and thirty two percent bigger, right? But they're nine hundred and sixty one percent, so they have. Even though with Jerry's comment that they need more employees and stuff, they still have a bigger basis to pay that.
Sure.
I, that's why I put those in, so you can see, he's corrected, we were taxing just on population. But that's not what pays the bill, not the population, it's the value of the property.
Okay, I, I agree, Middleton has more of a pop, if you're looking at that kind of.
Well, you can look at all of them if they see, you can see that, and that's why. I'm, I'm, like I say, I didn't argue at all with their using these as comparisons with the idea. That we need to be competitive, right? Agree with you, but that ends at step one. I don't think a department head at Middleton, we should be care. Comparing them with departments here, because you have to look at, if you're going to do that, you have to look at. Education, experience, responsibility, authority, and I'll just. Pick on the chief, there's a difference between a chief with a department of six people. Than a chief that has a department of sixty people, would you agree with that? That there should, there's probably a pay difference there?
Yes.
Okay, so if we're gonna start using these communities as that, for that purpose. Then we have to dig much deeper into the weeds, now, after saying that. If you look at the line worker, it doesn't matter if you're in Cross Plains or Middleton or Verona. If you gotta pick up, let's say, leaves, you're picking it up the same, there's no difference in that job, right? There's more, obviously, and you need more bodies to do it, but that's why. I'm pushing to get more for line workers. And I'm, I'm not sure we've achieved that here. And that's what I, the main reason I went along with that, because I don't believe Verona, Wanakee and Middleton are good comparisons. I'll go on, you know, understanding on where they go, but there's a lot of communities in Dane County that are closer to four thousand. Than Verona, Wanakee and Middleton.
The only reason I could say they're good comparables is because that's who we were moving staff.
Exactly, and that was the reasoning behind it, and I agree with that, that was great reasoning.
I, I would also argue, though, that the cost of living in most communities that are four thousand around here are substantially less. That's where I think it's really challenging for Cross Plains, if you look at the house price of Cross Plains compared to like.
Now, Shorewood, Maple Bluff are pretty close to our size and they.
The thing is, there's not a village in Dane County that has like, we all have the same cost of living, there's no village in Dane County, city, town, whatever. That you can compare us to.
Why do you say that?
Wouldn't there be one on here?
Well, Marshall, I would say.
That's a very different community.
Well, I, hey, don't, you can't compare state aid, I don't know how that, the towns around us got three hundred percent increases. We got a one hundred percent increase, I don't know how they calculated all of that, but I'm just saying. You're asking me, you can go to Dane County, they, we were in group three or something like that, and they listed, I think Belleville was one, maybe. Um, I, I can't remember who else was in there, um, Stoughton, maybe, I don't know, I, I, it doesn't matter. I, I agreed with the concept of what happened, I think what's happened is we've got, I feel they've gone away from the concept. The concept was being competitive, just like you said, I can't, we can never think that we're gonna be able to pay. Our department has the same amount of money that Middleton does, and I don't think it's warranted. There's just, they're totally different job. But, so we have to look at that and, and separate that, this to me was ideas of trying to retain. And be competitive with getting employees. So my next question then would be on the steps, please explain after this year. How this step system is going to be implemented?
The steps are a simple longevity plan, so you just move to the next step.
Okay, but I don't understand, if someone, let's take Renee.
Okay.
She's been here over eighteen years, right?
Right.
So she's in step three right now. So next year, she's gonna jump to step eighteen, or step ten?
Now, automatically, we would probably look at numbers and propose. More if we can, otherwise, they'll just move up one step. So yes, ideally, we would love to put everyone where they should be, we know we can't do it this year. So then next year, we'll come back with a plan, you know, if there's mine.
So, so I, I just wanna make a group, so the steps that we're referring to is like longevity, it's strictly tied.
Yes, that's what you asked for.
Well. I made a suggest, I'm trying to understand what it is, my headstep raises are within grades.
Yes.
That, okay, longevity has, doesn't matter where you are in grades, it doesn't matter, it's based. Clearly on how long you've been. So it doesn't, grade doesn't matter, where step you are within your grade shouldn't matter. It's a separate calculation that's done on how long you've been in the village and rewarding you for staying in the village. So I'm trying to make sure that we all understand that if that, is that the case?
It is not as complicated as Madison where they have a hundred different.
No, I, I understand that, is it tied to longevity?
For longevity.
Just straight longevity?
So you could move up a grade, but you would not move a step this way or this way.
Okay, alright. So then, here's where, I, I think eighteen percent is too high. I know you went from thirty down to eighteen, I think. A lot of places are more around the twelve. Yeah, at eighteen years, they would be at twelve percent longevity and it caps up. I mean, a lot of places go longer than eighteen years, but I'm not gonna differ over the, the years, a lot of places will, like. City of Madison goes thirty years. Or twenty five years, twenty five or twenty six. Uh, so I'm fine with, with going eighteen years, I just think eighteen percent is too high.
Where was that feedback when we asked for feedback?
Oh, I have, I have given quite a bit of feedback, okay, well.
Okay, well, it was approved, so.
I think you took some of my feedback, right, it was originally at thirty percent, and you went to eighteen, so you took, so I gave you feedback, you took it.
You guys approved that.
Well, no, they didn't. No, we accepted the report, and please don't hold us accountable because you changed the grading system.
Changed anything after that plan was.
Yes, you did.
We did not.
This is the first time, when did you make the decision to boot, uh?
Before that plan was approved.
Yeah, that was on there from the get go.
From the very beginning?
Yeah. It's been on there for three months or longer.
That you weren't in it?
Yeah, yeah, that, that's, that is, that has been constant.
Well, that's interesting, cause I had the original that I wrote down, and then I went through and made changes, and I didn't have that.
It was talked about the last time, or it's been brought up.
That we got him out of the grade?
We, we talked about like the exceptional bonus thing and, and some of the parameters with that, but that was kind of.
So when did we, so, I, I'm trying to figure out how I ended up knowing that you lowered. Someone's, uh, there's two people, Jeff and Raymond went from grade five to grade four. And I wondered if I didn't have an original one, and then a new one, how would I know that, I mean, why would I put that down? I mean, I'm copying just from documents, so when was that decided, I thought that was decided the same time you moved people up to ten.
I don't think anybody's proposed to go down.
Well.
I think.
I'm going to.
So we had everyone at that position at five. But then, before we approved this, we um looked at their qualifications. And if we're gonna pick on a person, you know, that person maybe didn't have a CDL or whatever it was, so they. Are four instead of a five, so originally, we just said everyone in this position is a five, but then when we actually looked into it deeper, that one person. But in any event, nothing was changed since the meeting where we presented the final, you guys, which was August. You guys, yeah, which was August.
All right. Uh, I'm going to challenge. I'm looking at it right now, exhibit B. It has. I'm looking at the report. I went back to that, the report that was put in our OneDrive. And I have library, the upgrades that I see changing is library directors going from an eight to nine. Finance director, eight to nine, arts and rec director, eight to nine. Forestry is going five to seven, assistant library director going three to six. Youth service library going from two to five. Deputy clerk treasurer, two to five, recreation and aquatic supervisor, two to six. Recreation coordinator, two to five. And assistant clerk clerk going from one to three. Now, I'm looking at this document and this is what I'm pulling. And I still see the administrator as ten, police chief as nine, public works as nine. So. You guys are trying to ghost like me, I think, or gaslight me, I think it's called, isn't it?
Exhibit E from June twenty-first, I think is what he's looking at.
No, no, it's a, I, mine says exhibit B.
My mind says E, it's in the.
No, no, that's your, that just tells you. The, the grades and that's just the definition. No, you should have gone, go back a page, just go back one page.
I'm looking at what was in the packet.
I'm looking at what is called.
But that's from six twenty-one.
No, mine is, I have Village of Cross Plains compensation, compensation strategy, June twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-three. Okay. Well, I'm just.
I mean, there's some, uh, we changed the like salary step percentages between June and August. There's been some changes. But I, I don't, on the top of my head, I do not remember.
So I'm looking at what was put in the packet.
For which, what, what month?
August.
August. Very possible. I didn't update. But I would have challenged there if I would have noticed that, because I, again, I don't think that's fair, but.
Yeah, the thing in August, that is exactly what it is.
It is, I, okay, I'm, I'm pulling it up right now.
The emails and stuff we got that kind of support this topic.
What page is that on, so I can?
Uh, August, the, uh, page one hundred and twenty-five.
One twenty-five?
That's exhibit B, the grade scale with the police chief in. Grade eight to ten, public works director in grade eight to ten, depending, you know, it's going from entry level skill to advanced.
He said August twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three, meaning page one twenty-five?
Oh, one twenty-five of the PDF, one twenty-one, if you're looking at the red numbers on bottom.
Oh, okay. All right, good enough, I, so. So everybody, well, okay, so. This, this to me, the grading scale, so these are the benchmarks, right? So for, I'm just looking at the first one, to be in grade ten, bachelor degree. In related field, twenty years of experience as a sworn officer. Ten plus years supervisory experience in advanced training, right? So that's what, those are the, that's what you use to mark people? Okay.
So, well, then, yeah, so that would be a grade ten police chief.
Right, yeah.
What a grade eight police chief would, you know, have.
Yep.
Lesser stuff.
Yep, yep, gotcha. Okay, I, okay. See, I saw this as bench and I didn't go and put everybody in a category. And I don't think this, unless we all know everybody's. Degree, education, experience and stuff, how we would know what grade they would be at.
That's not, I mean, I think they are aware of that.
Right, right, but what I'm saying, what I'm saying is from what we got first time that listed what grade they were in. To this, I would not have then gone through and said, okay, our chief falls this, 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 right? I mean, this is the benchmarking.
Right.
It's not the conclusion of the benchmark.
Yeah, that's what they didn't provide. It was the conclusion, right?
Right, but it's not, ha- have we, my, the whole thing was, did we get it before this meeting? And the answer is no.
Well, what we approved in August was like.
Current people in August.
In August, what we're approving was like the plan going forward. So if we had to replace Chief Tony tomorrow. And please don't leave Chief Tony.
Right, no, no, but.
Um, but and, and we got, we got a new police chief, right? And let's say they had the ten years of experience.
Yes, I understand. But the point I'm trying to make is when I brought this up and Bobby said we already approved it. We never had anything that said what grades people were gonna be in, except for in June and tonight.
Right, and in August, when we approved it, though, part of the discussion was.
The benchmarking.
Well, and, and that was like, this is for new employees that we would hire going forward.
Yeah.
And then staff made it clear that in the next meeting, we are coming with where we think people should slot.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
So we, this, this was the meeting that we have that discussion. So we haven't had the discussion.
We're having it right now.
Right, so, okay. Wow, we're going in circles.
So the department has set down, look, you did their staff numbers into a grade based on what was approved in August. Benchmark, so the benchmarks were approved in August.
Correct.
So I said, I said, okay, Renee, she's been here thirty-five years, so she's in the highest grade for her.
Right, but everybody was very critical of me because I'm going down here and comparing and saying, I should have known that.
Right.
And I didn't. I took June and I took what you did and put the difference on here. So there was no deception there or anything like that. I took what was given in June. And now what was given here and I put it in a spreadsheet. I didn't make up anything.
Okay, well, that's.
And we should have, be able to have that discussion.
You're gonna argue someone's years of experience that.
No, I'm not gonna argue anything. I'm not arguing anything. I just wanna make sure.
The chief wants to understand.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out. And like I say, I will, I, I, I'm not in favor of eighteen percent for a longevity.
We're not talking about that time.
Well, we should be because it's tied to budget.
Not for next year?
Yeah, that's, that, well, that's, if, if you wanna talk about that, that has to be a different agenda item, a different meeting, that what we approved last month.
No.
Yes.
No, we approved the concept of that, plus we didn't approve any money in August, zero.
Correct.
We didn't, we are discussing money right now.
But, but.
So, so it is, this is clearly within the budget talk. What we decide tonight does have an effect in future budgets. This is, and this budget, it clearly does.
Well, then, next one, put an agenda on to change future years' budgets.
No, I don't think, Bobby, I don't have to do that. And that's not the right way because.
Current employees, it doesn't matter that longevity scale today.
Sure it does.
Well, no, because they, they, they put in some rules here. So just because Renee's been here for thirty-five years, she did not get slotted in grade ten. They, they, okay, they put a maximum cap of grade thirty.
But if I am not in favor of the eighteen percent and wanna go to twelve percent. Then we have to adjust the steps, which affects next year's budget. Agreed?
Uh, we would still front load and have three years, so.
Well, first, I don't know, that I think is a board decision, because that's budgetary, so that's a board's decision. Um. So I'm not, I'm not sure that's what the board would decide, and I'm not sure the board even. Agrees with me that eighteen percent is too high. I don't know. We'd have to just find out, but it's clearly. Able to talk about that tonight.
I think what we voted on in August was, because there was no money attached to it, you're right there. That was like a policy for new employees. That eighteen percent and all that stuff did not bridge to what we're trying to talk about tonight, which is current employees. You know, because again, they've already, they've already shifted things, like no one is actually falling into that step.
No, but, but that's what we're doing tonight. We're approving a budget item for longevity. So I think we should have a discussion on it.
I think what we're approving tonight, discussion possible actually regarding the twenty twenty-four draft budget and village staffs. The sub, staff supplemental requests are for staff right now. And the raises to fit in that. If you don't like the policy that we passed in August about the eighteen percent, I would say that would be a different topic or a different meeting. Because that would be going forward for, you know, new hires.
The calculation that you see here includes the staff raises.
Okay, so I mean, you're looking at a couple percent. The highest they go is, is, uh, step three.
Which is all in the three percent.
Right.
Well, shouldn't they have, they should have ninety percent?
Uh, well.
Well, no, I mean.
But. Six, whatever. They should have, I'm hoping that's how it was done.
I, I, maybe I'm.
Was it done that way? The people in the third step, they're getting the money for step one and two, right?
No.
Well, that's not, how's that, then everybody's, if everybody's just getting the two percent, then everybody's in step one. If you have some people in step one, some people in step two, some people in step three. The difference should be, the people in step three are getting the money from step one and step two. Otherwise, everybody's in step one.
Yeah, they are, because it's a higher amount than, than step one. Step three is a higher amount than step one for more than fifteen years of experience.
They don't get the difference of step one and step two. They started step three with that higher payment amount. They're slotted for that step.
Okay, I'm not, that one I'm not following. Give me an example.
So if somebody was hired yesterday and put into grade four.
Grade four, step, step one.
But employee who's been here for fifteen years is slotted into step three, so they've gotten. Like at the sixth, because it goes up three percent each column.
Yeah.
Well, not each column, just the first couple.
Yeah, yeah.
So they would get six percent more than that.
Higher, personally, just got hired.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, they are. That's, that's when they place the people of over fifteen years in step three. They're giving them basically six percent.
Right, that's right, okay, then that's correctly done. So it, it, it matters then. Well, first, let's just.
If you don't, if you don't like that policy, you're right.
I don't wanna call it a policy, it's not a policy.
Okay, I don't know what it is, but if, if you don't like the, the strategy we voted for in August. And you want to apply that to current staffs, I, I, I still think, I mean, you're, I mean, okay, you don't like eighteen percent, you wanna move it down to twelve. I mean, you're still only looking like, how much would you reduce the first couple steps? I mean, you're only gonna, I mean, you're adjusting things by a percent or two, maybe?
Yeah, but the point is, if you don't do it now, everybody's under this impression, if we pass it. That we're gonna have an eighteen percent longevity group. And then when the next board does it, if they don't like that, then it's taken away from the employees.
But we already did it, so if we're taking it.
No, we're not taking anything away. We accepted their report. We did not. Vote on any money tied to it. That's what we're doing, and I think if you go back. You can see that, listen to that discussion. So the, I just wanna see here, because if I'm the only one that thinks that, that there's no sense wasting any more time. Does anybody think we should adjust the longevity pay? Besides me.
But. I, I guess I'm still stuck, because even if you do, I don't think it applies to the, 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 that's number three topic here as listed.
I think it clearly applies.
Well, okay, it might apply, but I don't think we can take any action on that tonight.
I disagree. We're setting up the twenty twenty-four budget. Anything tied to budget is good to go.
Well, but I still think that we can't predict what's going to happen in the economy. So like, I mean, I'm on, I'm on a similar scale. I can look ahead to the future of what I'm hoping I'm going to make. But I also know that things happen and can change that, and that we have to look at budgets from year to year.
Well, see, I'm a little different, and, and, and it's because I work under another system. When you tell an employee. That they're gonna get twelve percent and you break it down, that is automatic. There is no taking that away. You can negotiate.
Well, that is not, I, I work on two different.
Yeah, you may, the City of Madison doesn't. City of Madison will negotiate yearly prior. But your longevity is no different than your sick leave benefit and everything else. Can it be changed? Sure, but it's rarely changed. That is something that people count on. That, hey, I know I'm gonna get this percent next year because I've been here fifteen years.
I don't think you can say it rarely happens. That happened to me in Marshall. It's happened to me in Cross Plains. So, I mean, I'm an example, two times where it has happened. So, and you're using City of Madison. I'm comparing it to Marshall, which is a comparable size.
But school districts, right, or?
Correct, but Marshall has its own school district. It's pretty small.
Yeah, no, I mean, like I say, school districts, they just run things differently, I guess, you know?
You're using only City of Madison.
No, well, that's my only experience. I guess I like it. I'd like to poll employees. Would you? Are you okay with having a, a longevity that is questionable every year, if we give it or not, or do you wanna lock you in where it's? You know you're gonna get it. What do, I mean, I'll, I'll go either way.
Who's ever had it?
Well, that's what I'm saying, exactly.
Well, make up your fucking mind.
All right.
So I, I think I can. Encapsulated with there. You said we've been working on this for two years, right? And we're sitting here bickering in front of the people who are asking for it, like. If you dangled a carrot in front of my face for two years, see ya.
Well, you know what? I, I, I'm not gonna. We, we are, we represent the taxpayers too, right? So there's gotta be a balance here, so I'm trying. Well, I'm so, I, I apologize that they're pissed off, but this is a business. It's a business decision, and the decision is, do we want longevity and what it is it? And it sounds like everybody wants longevity. You guys are feeling that it's one of those things that we can pull off any year. That we, every year that we do budget, we can say, this year we're not paying longevity. Next year, yeah, we'll pay longevity. I don't know how that works. I don't know what that looks like. I don't know if you get back pay. If you missed your longevity raise on a year that they said we're not giving it. The next year, do you go back and get that, or you lose it forever? How do they run that?
Well, it all depends on how much money there is.
But, but, you can, you had examples where you lost your longevity.
They have tried. They have tried to do fixes. They're trying again. It's, it's a work in process. I don't think we're ever going to find one system that's going to be what we use for the next thirty years. I think things have changed a lot, but I also think that we do, like, I thought the point of tonight was looking at next year's budget.
Yep, it is.
But that doesn't feel like that's what we're talking about right now.
Well, it does, because all of those step raises are going into effect next year. I don't know how you can get around that. Next, we, like they said, they've never had it. So we're adding something to the budget for twenty twenty-four. So of course, we're talking about twenty twenty-four.
I guess, what is the goal of this conversation? Is it to cut ten thousand dollars? Or to approve and pull or approve nothing? Like, all we're doing is talking in circles here. We need to move forward.
Well, that's what I'm trying. The, the, I'm trying to set up to know, so employees know exactly what they're gonna get in the future. I don't understand it, and I've been doing this, so I just wanna know, in this case. How we're working longevity, and if everybody's happy with. We'll pick a year and every year it comes up, we'll either approve it or not approve it. I'll, I'll live with that. I don't think that's. I'll, I'll live with that, I don't think that's. The way to go, but.
I think originally had a policy that it would be up to the discretion every year, and you asked to remove that, so I believe it is now, the longevity. Is a given every year, and the cost of living is the variable.
Right, and that, I would agree with a hundred percent. So the question is now. Is, is eighteen percent? The number we should have. Or should it be something lower, higher, whatever, I think it should be lower, I think eighteen percent is hot. Doug.
My thought process coming into tonight was. Not to stunt quite that much. My thought process was, I appreciated the work that's been done and put. Vailing our employees, but what I get to talk to about. From taxpayers is taxes and water subsidies, and the more increases and things we get, we don't pay this tax. I value my staff, my dad was a staff. Uh, my thought process was to. Take the hundred thousand dollars and try to have it all in twenty twenty four, was to have half of it in twenty twenty four and the max now in twenty twenty five. That was what my thought process was.
So. Just to put a wrench in that, this year, we kinda get a. Free. Reset on the expenditure restraint. So it would benefit us to load it heavy this year because then we won't be penalized next year for a big increase.
If that, if that makes sense, if that's the better way to do it, that's fine, um.
And with our. Large increase in assessed value this year, I. We can afford it, I don't know, what, what do you guys think is an acceptable test?
But we're still getting to our levy, we can say we can afford it, but we're still getting to our max levy though.
We will, right, and our EMS comes in and whatnot. We'll be pushing.
That's what we see. Honestly.
You bet. What?
So either way, the tax rate increase will be minimal, the most it could be is a half percent or point six percent, so. Tax increase isn't that much, it's the levy limit if you're concerned.
Right, that's.
I mean, we were up against the, the levy before.
No, we had eighty two thousand last year, I think.
That's the difference.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I'm just curious, I know it's in the past, but did the Moeen contract have anything to do with us approaching this levy limit?
We'd be closer with going with.
It didn't matter how you said it, yeah.
I'm just curious, so it happens, it happens about the same cost?
Okay.
It.
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Ray Carroll, I'm your newest employee. You're talking about. A guaranteed not taking something away. One big reason I came across planes with your benefits with the. All of a sudden, one and a half ago, I'm told I have to pay a extra two hundred dollars a month, cause our insurance changed. So either the doctor I've had for twenty five years, I gotta tell him to get screwed, cause I can't afford the extra two hundred dollars. That's a big change to somebody like my, in my life, so. When you're talking about. A guarantee for an employee. That was definitely a big takeaway. So.
A big takeaway, what, the insurance was a big takeaway, or so? Yeah.
So we don't lose two hundred dollars a month, or I need four hundred.
Right, right. Great. Well. That's why I think it's gotta be. Solid, I don't, I don't like taking one. All right, we're here, go ahead, Michael.
Okay, so I've listened to everything you said, and talking about the, the salary scale, um. With regard to the eighteen percent, I did at one time think that that was. Too much and thought about reducing it. Second time looking at the salary scale, we talked about trying to get eighty percent for new hires, for some reason. If we're trying to keep employees, why didn't we bump that up to a higher amount, if we're trying to keep. Current employees where they know they're gonna be making eighty percent of Corona or wherever. I would like to, I would possibly like to see those amounts brought up to equalize those for our line workers. Now, inside of the pay scale thing, I also found it very strange and intriguing that like when you go from a grade six to a seven, it's an eight thousand dollar bump, a seven to an eight is an eight thousand dollar bump, and an eight to a nine is a six, and a nine to a ten is six. Seems a very much so highly overpower higher grade workers, and with the whole entire idea was we're supposed to compensate line, like, it seems like it's an inverted system a little bit. So, and I think it was done specifically to try to get. Our department heads closer to being in line with the communities around us, be at the exact same time as Jay was pointing out. The public facilities department of these other departments might have ten times the amount of employees, does that mean that the, our department heads need to make that same amount? That's what I have summarized and thought about as going through this, seems heavy, tough, heavy, and not enough on the spot.
All right. People's feelings, just.
Cody, I'm just curious, how long have the department heads been paid substantially last time they were bumped up, I don't have that. Data in front of me, like, if you have a, say, let's pick on Jerry, a public facility guy who's the head of it. When, has he been? Undercompensated for, what? Twenty two years, twenty two years, maybe it's in that department head gets up there, like. I don't know, it seemed kind of like, not you, but earlier it seemed like Jay was, you kind of framed it like. Well, before this was line worker, now it's apartment heads, I just wanna know.
Well, you have the numbers, he's at ninety two percent of the average of. Monhor, Verona, Wanakee and Middleton combined.
On average, but he's been here for thirty years.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just saying, I'm just. I, I'm not. I don't have all the, the information you're looking, I don't know what the Middleton guy is, Bro, I don't even know their name. This was their project, right, they're the ones that came up with these, they're the ones that came up with the average salary, I didn't do any of that. I just did the calculation of the percentages, because part of that was the seventy to eighty thing, so I just wanted to know. How close we were to that, cause that was the goal, right?
Yep.
Yeah, I know, I understand that.
But you're, you're saying that someone who's been here for thirty years, you're looking at a thirty year salary, and saying, well, he's ninety two percent, yeah, ninety two percent of what you would hire someone like.
Well, that's not necessary.
Hiring power, he is not a new employee. You should.
I, I under.
What someone who had worked in Monhor for thirty years is thinking, I bet he's a lot lower than I need.
I'm not sure there's anybody in Monhor that's worked thirty years. So I, I, I'm, I'm, you know what I'm saying, and then if you're going to do that. Like I mentioned earlier, you gotta go deeper than just title. Right, a Middleton Public Works. Uh, Public Works Director for Middleton probably has more responsibility. More authority probably than ours, I don't know, I, I'm just throwing things out there that, that's probably what happens.
I, I think he's actually the city engineer.
Yeah, it could be, I don't, I, I don't know. Dave.
I think if you wanna go deeper into the weeds, you would find that Jerry does many multiple things, he's head of streets. He's head of public works, whereas in a place like Middleton, Verona, they break build up.
Right.
And a parks person, I'm also doing plumbing, I'm also doing native plantings, I'm, we wear many more hats than some of these other places do.
Oh, I agree a hundred percent, that's what I'm saying, we have to look into that. But what was given to us was eighty, seventy to eighty percent of starting wages, and we wanna be at eighty percent of it. That's, I, we didn't do it, that's not a board, I understand that's the starting point, because the whole idea of this was for retainment. And hiring, right? So if you, if someone leaves here. They're not gonna get the top salary at any of these places.
Agreed, not the top salary, but they might get more than what they're making now, that's what they wanted to happen, correct?
No, disagree, I disagree, I don't want them. Tony, I don't want people to leave, but I don't have it if Jerry. Takes the job in Middleton as the public works, I'm gonna say congratulations, thanks for ha- helping, I'm not gonna hold someone down. From trying to move forward.
I don't wanna hold anyone down, moving forward, I just wanna make sure they're tempted.
I can tell, but the question is the fair, right, that's what we're talking about. The fairness to it, and the question is, do you say that someone in Cross Plains should get the same salary as someone in Middleton? At the upper level.
I think this is just.
Any level.
No, I know, right.
It's, this has got the same.
I'm just looking at.
Company for fifty thousand dollars and they couldn't.
No, you guys did a great job, I'm just trying to.
Well, obviously we didn't, it's.
No. Bobby, this is a budget thing. There's nothing wrong with having a discussion, I am not gonna be intimidated because you think that this discussion's going too long, that's what we do, we're policymakers. We have to come up with a budget that we can explain to the employees and to the taxpayers, so, let's just. Call it, that's, this is what we do, there's nothing to insult. The employees, you guys did a great job on this. We're just, there's difference of opinions, there's nothing wrong with that.
Okay, so where's the negotiation, what's the next step here?
Well, I'm trying to, that's what I was gonna go around and say with the player, maybe everybody just says, I'm in hell with this, let's just go with what it is. You know, I just wanted to understand certain things, I have a better understanding now, my only thing is, I'd like to clear up the longevity thing, that's the only thing I'd like to clear up. And then I hold the same. Concerns with Judy on the, um. The levy limit, I think it's a mistake. To go up against that, cause I think next year, we will have a gap. And unfortunately, there's no good way around gaps.
What is a gap?
Difference on what you wanna spend and what you can spend. So there's, you hear it on the county, cities, everything, they have a gap, there's that gap between the levy limit and what you wanna spend, and you've got to fill it.
So a year and a half, I've been here, there's been that gap, and we always.
No, we've always had a plus, we've always flirted.
Well, I know we had a plus, but we've never had enough from plus where we talked about, oh, we could hire this position, or we could add this.
No.
No, 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 we can't, cause that was too close to the levy limit.
Okay, but, but you're gonna see how difficult and negative it is when. The gap is the other way.
You got sort of like.
It, it's. It, it, it is not good, it's, there's no. Good solution to filling a gap that direction, so, like I said, if people are willing to take that gamble. And clearly understanding that we're going up to the levy limit. And I think state funding, what I saw will go up two point three percent, so we'll have that, hopefully we'll have. Some more growth, so there'll be some expansion there.
I mean, you go the other way, you just hope people don't leave, and that's, that's expensive too, I know, and you can't print it out on paper and look at it black and white like a levy limit, but that's expensive too.
Yep.
But, can you explain it to me, like a three year old would understand it, why this year is the year that we would make this judgment?
And the one reason would be the, um, exponential restraint. So exponential restraint, look at what we budgeted last year versus what we'd wanted this year. And we can only increase that by, um. Down as inflation and sixty percent of net new construction. So because everyone got this huge influx of. Additional revenue. That we have to spend, everyone's expensive, they're gonna go up more than what they should. So they're giving everyone a free pass this year to spend as much as we want essentially, and then next year, they'll. Kind of reset it, and they'll look at this year's budget. So. We, we kinda get a free pass on increasing expenses.
Yeah, but that's on, he was asking the levy limit, why are we up against the?
No, I was asking, I was asking why this year is when she went down and said, go fifty fifty, why she said.
Oh, I see.
I kinda wanted to wrap my header with that, I wanted to finance directors.
Yeah.
Really to explain it to you.
No, that is correct, yep.
Bobby, is there any way that you think we could approve this budget for the income for salaries and still not? Run up against the tax levy? Like what, like what could we do to avoid that?
With two hundred and twenty eight thousand, we know Moeen's gonna be, what do we say, eighty to?
Ninety two.
Ninety two, ninety thousand, we'll say ninety, like round them. And if we think EMS is gonna be eighty six ticks, that's a hundred and seventy six. But then we have the, you know, fifty thousand roughly. Left. We're proposing to spend forty eight five.
But we really need a hundred and one.
Well, well.
No, no, no.
We would need forty.
By, by the salary increase numbers, it's going up by ninety something, but, but, but not all of that is.
So. So say we have this fifty thousand dollar cushion, how much are we comfortable? You know, if we're, we want fifty thousand cushions, then there's no increases above a three percent. You know, like. Our cushion isn't gonna get bigger. Every year it gets. We get closer and closer. And I think. If you look statewide, I don't know what the numbers are, but I would assume there are several municipalities who are at their limit, or going to referendums. Who are flirting with their levy limit, it's. Obviously, it's not ideal, it's not a good place to be in, but I think we just need to. Realize we're, we're close, it's gonna happen.
So, cause, because last year, the school district did it, they took the referendum to increase wages, right, it's the last year before.
Maybe last year, about two years ago, that one.
A lot of cities in Wisconsin did last year. And, and, I mean, if you look at the numbers to the state, revenue has been almost flat for twenty years, I mean, that's.
Well, the levy limit doesn't increase of inflation, that's the problem, right?
Yep.
It's not our fault, it's not anybody's fault, it's the way the state laws.
We just have to figure out the work then.
Well, and that's why they spent all. Up to everybody's shared revenue to help offset some of that. So we had an extra hundred thousand that we didn't have last year. So if we kept our spending to a hundred thousand, we would have lots of room, right, and we. Got that money, our, our role was another two hundred, so we could have spent three hundred thousand.
Was any of that kinda like an attempt to? Buckle wages, like, was there any?
Well, they just, everybody's getting like, like they were saying. Everybody was getting close to the levy number, right, so the state had all that surplus, and they decided to give it to municipalities. How they did the formula seems extremely unfair to me, cause the township's got huge amounts. In percentages compared to us, dollar wise, we got more, but. Town Cross Plains got three hundred, three hundred percent more, or we got ninety nine percent more. Which is good, but.
I see it as the best way to spend that money is probably to take care of our employees that we haven't taken care of the last two years, so. I get it, we're gonna be up for tough decisions next year's budget time, one hard beat.
This, the closest to hitting the levy limit is exactly that. That's long.
Oh, it's a tough decision, it's definitely a policy decision how comfortable we are getting to that level.
And let me just, I don't wanna rehash anything either, but I, I just wanna make sure. That I don't, I, I don't wanna say something if it's not worth it, is everybody comfortable with the longevity scale?
Think I am, oh, sorry, you.
Well, I'd be more comfortable if it was. The fifty fifty, I, I. I think it's too much in one year.
Oh, that wasn't the question.
No, I'm, I'm, was asking about, I wanna, I wanna take the longevity off the table.
Eighteen years.
Oh, that's, eighteen percent over eighteen years. So you're okay with it, you're saying you're okay with that, I'll just, okay, okay, all right, then we're good with it, oh, okay. Right, so then Doug had the idea of breaking the wages increases into two years. But that would be, I, I.
Does that undo everything we've done, or do they have to go back and rework it?
It would, my, I, the easiest way would be. Just everybody gets the three percent, and then the bonus would come in the next year. I think, wouldn't that break it about fifty fifty or no?
No.
Three percent's already in there.
Right, but, but what, what Doug is saying is taking the, because you, you know, there's. There's people only getting three percent weight increases, all, you know, all the people who are under contract are only getting three percent.
Yeah.
Right, so then we have fifty thousand. We don't, if all you're doing is giving everyone a three percent, then there's. We don't, if all you're doing is giving everyone a three percent, then there's fifty thousand dollars sitting on the table.
Well, I don't know how else to split it. If you're gonna split it in half. I I I don't wanna say, let's take this and split everything down, and some people are only getting a one and a half percent raise. That doesn't seem fair.
No, I I think the three percent is. I would, the three percent, it's like a guarantee, I'm giving, I would like to give everyone three percent.
Right.
The issue is the overage, which it sounds like on the overage over the three percent is close to forty eight thousand dollars. I think Doug is proposing to make the overage go to twenty four thousand dollars. So we have a twenty four thousand dollar buffer. Or beneath the levy limit, which would mean things like, and I'm not picking, if somebody's receiving a seven thousand dollar raise inside. This proposal, then you know, that's. More than a three percent raise, be like, okay, they don't get, you know, whatever, they now get a eight percent raise, because. It's like, it basically. All these supplemental things that you put in a spreadsheet, you're gonna go, how do we wanna do?
No, no.
Five thousand dollars.
So, so what Doug is saying is, just so I understand, thank you for explaining it. Everybody gets the three percent, then there's the forty eight percent of. Some people didn't get any, some got more. He's saying cut it in half. So everybody would just get fifty percent of that extra money. Right?
Right, that's what he's saying. Okay, all right, and so, and we could even, someone who's just getting three percent, give them four percent of it. I mean, you know, you have a lot of leeway, however you want it to do it.
So, can I, what do you mean that if everyone gets their three percent, then where they. Where they wanted to place them, we would just take two years to get them to that placement?
That was my thought process.
So then next year, do they get the other half, plus their stuff, plus their cola?
Well, the, well, yes, the answer, the answer would be if we keep longevity as is. If we decide that, but it sounds like the group is okay with us saying yes or no every year if we do longevity. But there would be the cola, and there would be this extra bump up, correct? I would see that absolutely, because all he's saying is take the twenty four thousand and bump it to the next year. And then longevity, everything is up for grabs after that.
Would that put us close to the levy then next year, or just kicking the can down?
Maybe we might not qualify for expenditure restraint.
Well, no, no, because all you're doing is giving us a cushion of twenty four thousand. But it's not gonna have.
Yeah, but.
Next year, I personally think we're not gonna have enough space to even worry about. Spending that much money because we're just not gonna have.
I mean, if you don't give it to them this year, they probably won't get it next year.
That's what, why do you say that?
I thought just what, that's what you just.
That's what you just said, but there won't be money next year to.
No, we'll have the twenty four thousand yet.
Yeah, but that could be consumer.
Yeah, that could be.
Well, I see what you're saying.
That twenty four thousand. Like, like health insurance of like a second.
Yeah, I don't understand the, I guess, what does it buy us to do fifty percent now and fifty percent next year, if that fifty percent next year is an interest?
Well, because it doesn't put us up against it, so if something happens, we have twenty four thousand dollars to spend.
Well, okay. What?
Okay, a boiler busts or something.
But that's chewing from the operating budget.
Whatever we take from the opera, I.
Well, but the boiler.
Okay, I'll give that example. What do we have in an operation?
Yeah, I know, but.
I asked a couple of them. First one, levy limit, and what you're worried about. Technically, once you approve the budget, you have, let's just say you have twenty thousand to go to the levy limit. That year is done. Once you approve it, that that money is gone. You're not, you're never going to that, getting that twenty thousand anyway. The reason that you have money in your operating budget for. Scares or problems is contingency, and I would ask you how much you have in contingency for this year in operating. There's a number. The other thing is fund downs. So when things go wrong, for instance, when the pool boilers did go out. You use some fund downs, right, to get us through that, and that's normally what's done when there's a emergency situation. Really, point of the levy limit, the only discussion is whether or not seven dollars is enough or fifteen dollars isn't enough. Or fifteen dollars.
Well.
With expenditure restraint. Can you go over your levy limits and qualify for that, or you just base it on the previous year, but you spent? Just based upon the previous year's, you know.
Increase.
Explain, Bobby, just, I know you can't go over your levy, but. How the expenditure, um, how we have a freebie this year, how that would impact?
David Max Alpha Levy. The levy limit is revenue expenditure, so it's kinda confusing. So say our total expenses last year, I'm gonna use the, were three million dollars. Well, this year we get. Two years ago was three million dollars. We were allowed to increase it. A hundred thousand dollars and still qualify. Well, this year we get a free year. So instead of only being able to increase our expenses a hundred thousand dollars, we can increase them five hundred thousand dollars. We're not that much, but. You know, and so then next year, they'll look at this year's budget rather. So because we're not getting penalized for spending more, this is the year to spend more.
So here's what that means. We got ninety one thousand this year from the program. We are scheduled to get eighty four thousand next year. They're freezing it, so the following year we will get eighty four thousand. And it doesn't matter what we spend, they're gonna give us the thirty, whatever we get in twenty four. It's generally the number they set up pot of money, and then the people, the number of villages that meet their standard. Get divided into this pot of money, and that's how. How they decide, so when she says.
By, it's for state, it's for the state.
It's a state basis.
So, if you meet their guidelines for budgetary increases.
Yes.
You, you are in the.
Okay. You get there.
But, once we get closer to the levy limit, we're more likely to qualify for expenditure restraint every year because our. We can only go off so much. So from here on out, we're guaranteed, not guaranteed, but it's likely we'll qualify for that expenditure restraint.
I would like to make the motion that we accept all village staff supplemental requests as presented.
That's second. All right, I have a motion and a second discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Sorry to shake me.
Yeah.
Yes.
Trusty Borger, yes, trusty Brandon.
Yes. Yes.
Trusty Caliber.
Yes.
Trusty Pomacalcy.
I'm about no. No. Alrighty, now I see that the, there's the base budget included. It's the motion didn't include that. The motion just was to include the supplements. And I think we have to have a motion to approve the uh draft budget.
I'll make the motion to approve the draft budget as presented.
All second.
All right, I have a motion and a second discussion.
Just a question, obviously, the draft budget doesn't have, I mean, not even the staff stuff, but all the other stuff we talked about earlier in this meeting.
I think the draft even has a three percent of salary, doesn't it?
It's the two percent of salaries, it does have all of the supplemental, so it will take out the twelve hundred dollars for the.
Oh, it did, it had, but does it have all the supplements that we approved to the the employee stuff in there too?
No.
No, I didn't, okay, you're talking about the base budget.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Just so you're clear.
Draft, draft, okay, I'm sorry, okay. I'm following now.
Yeah, it's a little confusing. All right, any other discussion? Uh, roll call vote.
Trusty Brunner.
Yes.
Trusty Pomacalcy.
Yes.
It ran it out of order. Trusty Caliber, yes. Trusty Borger, yes, Trusty Borger, yes, Trusty Brandon.
Yes.
Trusty Michael.
Yes. All right. Future agenda items. All right, here and none. Motion to adjourn, so move. Got a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all all the same, so move.